It doesn't look like it. You need one line. Yeah. I don't see anybody in line.
Good evening to all the meeting for order. Honolulu Neighborhood Board Number 28. I have to read the rules of speaking. Uh, Pani is not here tonight, so I'm Donnie Kelly Pack and I'm the chair tonight. We have new rules for speaking, especially for tonight. So to ensure the maximum opportunity for all attendees to be heard, the following guideline may apply. Those joining the meeting are reminded to mute their microphone. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to type their question in the chat box. Our raise your hand using the raise hand function in the online meeting platform, which is indicated by a hand or unmute yourself at the appropriate time as indicated by the chair. If accessing the meeting using your phone, you have to make a comment. You indicate this by pressing the symbol nine on your phone. This will show the moderator that the person calling from the number wishes to speak. To mute, unmute your phone, press six. Please wait until recognized by the chair to begin. All comments, concerns, or questions shall be two minutes or less. To help all attendees have the opportunity to hear presentations and comments, please place your device on mute until you would like to speak. When you are recognized, unmute yourself and make your comments. Note, the board may take action on any item on the agenda as required by the state sunshine laws. Specific issues not noted on this agenda cannot be voted on unless added to the agenda. Two-thirds vote five of this nine-member board is needed to add an item to the agenda. Items may not be added if they are not of major importance and will affect a significant number of people. Uh, our first order is of the city and state monthly reports on Honolulu Fire Department. Are you here with us? Online? Thank you.
Are you able to hear me? Can you hear me okay?
Yes, can hear you.
Yeah, I'm Captain Ryan Oke from the Haula Fire Station. I'm going to give you the monthly stats for February for the Haula, Ava, and Kuhu stations combined, as well as the March fire safety tip. So for the month of February, we responded to a total of four nuisance fires, which include rubbish fires, auto fires, and fires outside of a structure. Responded to thirty-five medical calls, four motor vehicle crash collisions, two mountain rescues, and one ocean rescue. Our fire safety tip for the month of March is smoke alarm safety tips. We want you, smoke alarms saves lives and are an important part of our fire escape plan. Properly install and maintain smoke alarms, give occupants early warning to get outside quickly. Recommend you install smoke alarms inside each bedroom and outside the sleeping areas always and every level of your home, including the basement. Keep smoke alarms away from the kitchen and bathrooms to limit false alarms. Test smoke alarms once a month by pressing the test button. Uh, smoke alarms require a nine-volt battery, replace it every year. Sometimes we recommend replacing it in October during Fire Prevention Week. And we recommend you replace your smoke alarms once every ten years. That is your fire safety tip. Any questions or concerns for me?
Any questions, members? Yes.
So I do have a question. Um, and this is about community emergency response teams. I know that here on Oahu, the city and county of Honolulu sponsors the CERT teams, but they don't really organize them. We're kind of self-organizing. In many areas, it's the fire department. In fact, on Maui, the fire department trains the CERT teams. So my question is, since we're starting to get some CERT teams going in this area, are the fire departments interested in communicating with and working with the CERT teams? And who, if there's been any talk of this, and who I should contact um to discuss this further?
That's a good question. Um, basically, we're, yes, we're um able to assist in that aspect. You'll have to contact our administration for a formal um response. But as far as the community goes, I'm sure every station within its community would like to participate in that.
Okay, thank you.
But yeah, you can contact our HFT administration by going to our HFT website, which is fire.honolulu.gov. You can make a request there. Somebody should get back to you quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions uh from the board? Or from the community? Anyone online? Any more questions, we'll go ahead. Thank you very much. Thank you. We'll go ahead to the Honolulu.
Can we ask questions?
I didn't see that. Uh, thank you, Casey. You may.
For quickly, Dottie, is it possible to tell us who is asking the question? That would be great for the people online to know. But um for um, thank you for Captain Ryan. Do you know last year we were supposed to have a presentation by um AES, who built the wind, the monster wind turbines in Kahuku? And twice it never worked out. Um, we are thankful that you finally, finally, finally got to um speak with them and coordinate some. Do you know if there are any evacuation drills um that were set up for um the turbo turbines? If anything happens, or if our hospital would have to be evacuated? Do you know if AES has talked about that with you or gone over those things? If there is a fire in the blade or a blade throw or anything like that?
Yeah, so we did a pre-plan with them last year sometime, or several years ago, actually. I believe, I thought they were supposed to have attended as neighborhood board and gave you guys a presentation. Understanding they didn't. Not sure.
No, twice they, they never did. They, we had the problems and they never did. So we, we never got it. Uh, the electricity went out and their, their uh, their presentation didn't work. So after that.
Yeah, as far as HFT is concerned, we toured the facilities, we checked their fire extinguishing systems. They have their plans for any emergencies there. And they gave us everything that they're, they have in place planned. They have a fire sprinkler system up there. They have safeguards in place as far as extinguishers within the windmill units. And they also have plans of evacuating their workers. But as far as the area around it, we never really, they never really mentioned that that was a concern.
Thank you, Casey. Thank you. Captain Ryan, heard it. Any other questions from people online? Please. Okay, we'll go ahead. I didn't see any other questions, so we'll go ahead to the Honolulu Police Department. Thank you, Captain.
Alright, thank you.
Honolulu Police Department?
Good evening, I'm Officer Jared Atkins with the District Four Community Policing Team. Um, the stats for February twenty twenty-four were um there were six motor vehicle thefts versus two the previous month. There were six burglaries in February versus one the previous month. There were thirteen thefts versus eight the previous month. There were seven car break-ins with the same the previous month. And there was one robbery in February versus one in January. And then I also have the stats from last year compared to this year. So last year, there were three more motor vehicle thefts. There was uh one more burglary this year. There was three more thefts this year. There were four more car break-ins last year. And robbery stayed the same. And then I also have a um, a community concern that our, our Kahuku Neighborhood Security Watch wanted me to bring up. Um, it was about the parking in the Pu'u Luana Street and Place intersection. Um, they complained, it's the, the Kahuku um elderly housing over there. They're complaining about um mostly the students parking too close to the intersection today, forcing um residents coming out of the, the place. They have to inch far into the intersection before they can see if they can turn or not, which is uh result um, roles almost um had uh several um vehicle accidents as a result of this. Um, in turn, they have been calling HPD um every day and we have been issuing tickets, but it seems that the problem continues. So they wanted us to uh, they wanted me to ask any city rep or DOT if they could possibly place some signs out there reminding people that they can't park within thirty feet of the intersection or on the sidewalk, um because there's no signage there and um ticketing doesn't seem to be helping the problem. So that's, that's all I have, and I can take any questions or concerns.
Um. Yes, we have a question from the board.
Hi, I'm Lorraine, and my question is, have you talked to the school? When you said students, I'm assuming that they're the high school kids. Um, have you not, you know, perhaps met with the administration and, and they can help?
To, to my knowledge, uh, no, we have not met with them.
It might be worth it.
Yeah, possibly.
I also have a question, Officer Atkins. Um. Is the, is the curb painted yellow or red right there?
So there's no, there's no actual curb. It's just a grass, there's a grass shoulder and then there is a cement sidewalk. Um, so the, the grass shoulder kinda, it's, it's almost wide enough for most vehicles to fit on, but larger vehicles cannot fit on the grass. So some vehicles end up, end up actually parking on the sidewalk as well. But the, the main issue is that, of course, the sidewalk issue is another problem because there's elderly people, you know, that need the sidewalk space. But their parking within thirty feet of that intersection is the main problem. Uh, people coming in or out of that intersection can't see oncoming traffic due to cars being parked so close. Sorry, breaking up.
Here's office. Because our office. Um, a complaint like Officer mentioned, but when I did the research, that road is actually private. Um, so I think it would have to be DOT because um if they could put it on Cam Highway. As far as the privately owned road, um, the city cannot put signage on the road.
They can't. We can't do our own signage, right?
Whoever, whoever owns the road can do it. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Jamie. Are you towing them, Officer, or are you ticketing them? Officer?
In, in, in some instances, they are told, but we have to wait three hours most of the time for a single car to be towed. So uh, we, and we have to stay there as well. So everyone knows Kahuku's a big area. We only have a few officers, so you know, it's, it's not, it's not a good option for us. So we tend to not do it.
So they're ticketed, is that correct?
Yes, they are ticketed, yes.
Oh, uh, you have to go back there, move over here. I can turn the other one on. I'll re, I'll repeat your question. What is the fine for? Officer, what is the fine for that ticket?
Thirty-five dollars.
Now, ticket away again. Okay. Any other questions? For Officer Atkins. What'd you say? Casey Congress has a question. Casey? Casey, you may speak.
Yes, I posted some of it. Um, again, I'm asking about ag theft um because of our side. And has it increased? Because at the Capitol, there was a lot of discussion about ag crime. And um, it wasn't just the tragedy on the, the other side of the island. John Morgan has been speaking and before we had Nozawa Farms. And they're, they're talking about um those who commit ag crimes that are difficult to deter, catch, prosecute, and punish appropriately. Is that your, are you able to talk about that? Is that something that you think that the state should step in and help with? Or um, are, are farmers and ranchers not reporting things on our side? Or just talking to the media instead?
Yeah, I, I believe it's going unreported and probably talking to the media because um that's something we kind of pride ourselves in. You know, if, if we see stuff, especially in District Four, if we see stuff increasing, we're going to shift our resources to, you know, combat that problem. Um, we, we have an ag association we talk with often in Waimea Nalo. We have a good relationship with them. You know, when they tell us stuff is starting to increase, we absolutely increase our presence using undercovers or whatever we gotta do to take care of the problem. And we would, if, if it is increasing in that area, we, and no one tells us about it, we're not gonna know. So um, I would encourage you, if this is occurring, that people need to report it. Because once we become aware of it, then we can take um, you know, we can take action on it. But i- if, if we don't know, you know, we, there's not much we can do. And, and you know, we need a, we need someone to report a crime and want to prosecute. If they don't report it or don't want to prosecute, then there's not much we can do, right? Um, I wouldn't, of course, we would always love more outside help, but I think if it was getting reported, I think we have enough resources in District Four at least to, you know, uh, combat an, an increase in agricultural theft.
Thank you, Officer Atkins. Any other questions from the participants on the seat? If not, we will go ahead and go on to the next presenter, United States Army.
Hi, good evening. I'm Sergeant First Class Matt Gray.
You, are you speaking through the mic? Great.
Sergeant First Class Matt Gray, representing the Twenty-Fifth Infantry Division Sustainment Brigade and uh US Army Garrison Hawaii. Last week, last month, when I left, a member of the community asked a question. I want to go ahead and start there uh with an answer for that. The question was, does the Army or military have roads and routes that can be used to connect communities in the event of emergencies like natural disasters? Um, the answer is long. The short form is that there are some things in place and some things that they're working on. US Army Hawaii uh Army Garrison and the United States Navy are currently in the process of updating a memorandum of understanding in place with the State of Hawaii Emergency Management Agency for the use of Kohli Kohli Pass for emergency purposes only. And this pass would be used from the Lee side into central Oahu during an emergency. The other route currently being observed for emergency purposes is Drum Road, which would potentially assist residents of the North Shore and Kahuku communities into the cen, into central Oahu. Now, at this time, Drum Road is in a state of disrepair and will not support any movement of civilian vehicle traffic due to washouts, unstable road sho, shoulders, and impassable water crossings following the recent rainstorms. Now, USAG Hawaii is continuing its assessment and understanding of the possible mitigation efforts for current hazards on Drum Road. Although USAG Hawaii is working through this possibility as way ahead, it is imperative for the communities affected to coordinate directly with the city and county emergency management and the state emergency management agency to collaborate and plan emergency responses and routes. Um, looking at the other announcements that I have, in March, a job fair is coming up on the nineteenth of March. It's going to go from eight-thirty until two PM. It's open to the public, and it's going to be at Mililani High School. There'll be job offerings and provisional hiring that day. If you want to apply ahead time, you can go to HIMWR.com. You can also walk in if you'd like to do that. Go ahead and bring two references, proof of ID, social security card, a resume or an application. There'll be opportunities in business operations like golf, bowling, food, child use services. And we'd love to see you there. Uh, also, United States Army Garrison published its March Training Advisory for Oahu on the first of March. That's online, you can find it on the division's page. Uh, some key notes from that, though, of course, is that in March, US Army in Hawaii will continue training in the East Range area with Ranger and Jungle Tactics with small arms blank fire all the way until the thirty-first of this month from six AM to six PM, just daytime. Additionally, on Schofield Barracks, there will be artillery and mortar training until the twenty-third. Uh, that one, you can expect both day and night live fire, including late evening and early morning hours. There will also be aviation training, rappelling, and extraction on the twenty-second of March in the daytime only. If you want to uh be added to the training advisory list, you can email USAG.Hawaii.com-rel@army.mill. A little bit more about the training on Schofield Barracks. Local army units are scheduled to conduct routine training activities in March that may be heard by the surrounding community. Training times will be occurring during the day and nighttime hours and are subject to change. Weather such as overcast conditions and Kona winds can and will increase noise and vibrations. And we do believe in training with aloha and to be mindful of our neighbors. Nighttime training is extremely important. Night training rarely stops for artificial constraints because those are the same constraints that, you know, we couldn't turn off in an actual crisis or conflict. Night training also includes elements of fatigue, discipline, and proficiency in the hours of limited visibility, especially in field training exercises. And that can't be replicated with an artificial constraint that concludes training earlier in the evening. Uh, for April. In April, the Army is going to be conducting a prescribed burn from the fifteenth to the twentieth of April. There on Schofield Barracks Training Range Complex. The prescribed burn is one of the most effective tools in managing the spread of wildfires and enhances the protection of endangered plants and animals by reducing vegetation, uh vegetative ground fuels that would otherwise be consumed by a wildfire. The Army has received approval from the Hawaii State Department of Health's Clean Air Branch and has coordinated with US Fish and Wildlife Service to ensure state, federal, and army requirements are met. Multiple personnel and assets from the Army are supporting the prescribed burns. That includes firefighters, aviators, engineers, range and safety officers, natural and cultural resources specialists, explosive ordinance disposal personnel, law enforcement personnel, and public. Can you hear us? Okay. Just wifi.
Were there any other questions from the US Army? Okay. Oh, wait, am I supposed to go with the board first? I'm sorry, who waits us in second? I'm new with this. Uh, any questions from the board? Did you have a question? Any questions from the community? Go ahead.
Honolulu Liberty Party, Ahana Community Association. Sorry to Sunny Greer, it's not you. My concern is you have to come up to the microphone.
Everybody wants to know what important question you're going to ask.
No, I can actually.
No.
I'm just going to raise a concern. I'm just going to raise a concern that uh maybe you're not aware of. But you know, in nineteen forty-one, nineteen forty-two, way back then, uh, I believe the Army was involved in clearing up the land bases in Kahana Valley that goes all the way around the valley. So you know, you are aware of Haula getting involved to build a hub coming up real soon. But Kahana is closed off because we're taken over by the state. But the Army was responsible for clearing up that whole valley area all the way around. And I'm asking that the Army gets involved with us in Kahana to clear up that whole roadway all the way in the back. So in case there's a tsunami, our own community can get up to that valley. You know, and so that's my request. If the Army is able to do that through community relations, you know, I was hoping that maybe Sunny Greer would have put it on the table. But I think it's something for us to take a look at. And I'll be glad to uh spearhead you guys in the right direction if you need help. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your, for your questions. Uh, I'm not able to speak on that. I'm not able to give an answer, but I'm certainly able to take the questions back to my people and hopefully get something.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions from the community? Online, any questions from the community?
Was speaking again?
Where you burning?
Okay. Sorry.
Okay. Any other questions in the community online? Okay. No questions, we'll go ahead. Thank you very much, officers and divisions. You being here?
Thank you. One of us is commissioned and one of us is not. We don't have officer in our title.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I'll accept the promotion.
Okay. Here we're going on to, next item is stolen vacancies. And we have a.
Here we're going on to next item is vacancies and we have a form.
Oh, yes, we do have a form, so we can do voting. And so the correct way of voting is when someone presents themselves, they explain who they are and why did they want to join the board? And after that is complete, when we do the voting process, just one of you board or one of the board members just have to nominate one person. And there's no, there's no need to have a second to it. And then after no one else wants to nominate anyone, we go through a roll call vote where I say your name and then you have to say the person that that so voting, so that you want to vote on to the board. Okay?
So the first question I should ask is anyone here interested in being on the board? Our district? District is how we look for?
Vacancy one.
Vacancy.
Subdistrict one.
Yes, because it's subdistrict one.
Hukumu, right?
Yes.
Kahuku first. Or do I have to go with Kahuku first? Subdistrict one. Anyone here interested in? Subdistrict one. Atalina. So you are willing to serve on the board. Do you want to say anything? Sorry, we're having to do.
Aloha, everyone. My name is Atalina. I would like to serve on the Ko'olau neighborhood board because I I see many community needs and gaps. And I know that this is the best way that I can be able to advocate for my community and to understand what resources there are to better serve Kahuku. I also sit on the Kukuku Community Association. So I know that we have a lot of projects that we would like to bring before the board. And I know that if I'm here, I can understand what's happening in Ha'ula, La'ia, Ka'ava, Kahana, Honolulu and understand how we as a Kukuku Community Association can better contribute to the whole Moku of Ko'olau. So I'm grateful and hope that I can help kaka'ol the entire Moku of Ko'olau. Mahalo.
Thank you, Atalina.
Mahalo.
I know, it has to be.
I will nominate. I would like to nominate Atalina Paschi. And I'm Lorraine.
Is there anyone else?
Are there any other individuals in the room that would like to run for office for District One? That's Kahuku. If not, should we vote? How we go on?
We can start the vote.
Okay, we'll start the vote. So we call, call roll and.
Do roll call.
Roll call.
Yes.
And we'll start with. Please, we have the last one. Okay, Lily.
Atalina.
I want to say your name.
Oh, Lily Makaila Atalina Paschi.
Okay. The next person, Rebecca.
Rebecca Carlson, I vote yes for Atalina Paschi.
You too, C?
To see a Ben Alio, yes for Atalina Paschi.
Thank you, Tusi. Lorraine?
Lorraine Isen Mupenge, I vote yes for Atalina.
Michael?
Michael, I vote yes for Atalina Paschi.
Okay, it's dying count at that. I vote yes.
She's on the board. I.
You're going to do the paperwork right now?
Well, I already have. Did you sign the paperwork somewhere? Okay. Yeah, I just have to redo the. The whole thing.
Okay.
Give you some.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to put their name out for participation on the board from Subdistrict Two, which is La'ia? La'ia.
Anson, I have a question. If the person is not here, do they have to be here and be able to speak in order for us to vote them on?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
If we have no one that is interested in putting the names forward for Subdistrict Two tonight, we can move that to the next calendar.
I'll just go.
For the next one.
I know that Auntie Keller was interested, but she was traveling and so she wasn't able to make it.
Most people are traveling.
Yeah.
I'll buy on that we're interested in them last. And she was only going to do rich because they couldn't find anybody, but she told them if they find somebody else, she was happy. You know, so I think they're looking. Then if nobody, then she was going to.
Yeah.
Constitutional law of the state of Hawaii. The Charter and laws of the city and the county of Honolulu. And provisions of the neighborhood plan.
I'm just going to ask a question. We have.
And will consist of Paschi and Sicily and in parts of district.
D O T is online. They are. I saw him.
Oh, okay.
He was. Yeah, no trouble.
I know he has a number of the board.
Make sure you read them.
Which I have been elected or he wants to.
Right.
Your signature. I sold that after I made board from the.
It's lovely you can be in the association meeting under the house.
Sometimes this is wrong. What's he?
I see.
Now you can join the citizens.
Usually don't get. So other than the turbines. So we are going to do Subdistrict Two's opening suspension of verdicts. Okay. Okay, we'll go ahead to item four. And I'd like to read the adoption rules that are specific to only tonight to allow the most number of community members the opportunity to ask various questions to presenters and to cut down on redundant questions. So the rules are questions will be one minute or less. Community members will be asked not to ask questions that have already been asked to the presenters. And three is questions that are typed into the chat that are similar in nature will be combined and asked by the meeting moderator. So please try to follow those new rules for tonight only because it was anticipated that there may be lots of questions. And we'll just try to go by these first. So. Where is?
I'm sorry.
No. Okay, we're going to government reports and the first is the mayor's report. And Kat Catcher is not available tonight, I don't believe. So I've been asked to read the report and I'll do my best. Kat always goes through this so fast. Now I realize why, because it's almost two pages. So I'll go as fast as I can. This month's highlights are Mayor Blanche Yardi's town hall meetings return. I have the dates below. The date for her live is May thirtieth, seven P M. Ha'ula Elementary School, and that's for all of Ko'olau. So Ha'ula Elementary School, seven P M, May thirtieth. That's a Thursday night. There will be Transportation Secretary Pete Buttigieg. Isn't that the right name? Buttigieg will visit Oahu. Doesn't say any when he's going to be, but I guess it's the month. The city's first climate adaptation strategy is adopted by the city council. Mayor Blanche Yardi commemorates Black History Month in Honolulu. The mayor's highlights newsletter will be found online and you can go to that at W W W dot one of Oahu dot org slash newsletter. See. Department issues follow up. One is about the speed bump statistics and efficacy. Are there any plans for the city to come back in a year to report a statistic of reduced deaths and injuries due to the speed bumps? Whether in Kahuku or generally. The answer is by the Department of Transportation Services. The Department of Transportation Services plans to evaluate the effectiveness of the recently installed speed bumps along Hula La'lea Street in one year to determine if speeding and crashes have been reduced. The other speed bumps in Kahuku fall under the State of Hawaii Department of Transportation jurisdiction. So that's up to them. So this was to the mayor. So this was the mayor's answer. I guess that's the only one they put in, the city put in. Two, crosswalk installation. What is the timeline for the installation of a crosswalk from the Seven Eleven to Ha'ula Beach Park? D T S, Department of Transportation Services, answer is the Van Van Highway and the installation of the crosswalk from the Seven Eleven to Ha'ula Beach Park is under H D O T's jurisdiction. Please refer to H D O T. Okay, three. D V P enforcement. How does D V P S T R E B enforce or grade in gated communities or secured buildings since the investigators cannot get access specifically Pat's at Poonu? Answer, Department of Planning and Reporting. When encountering a secured or gated residential property, the investigators from the D V P will attempt to contact the owners or management of the building. Access is not always necessary to issue a violation when prima facie evidence has been acquired through the other means. If access to Passat Poonu is ever needed, we will contact the management to make that request. Four, illegal vacation rentals. Are illegal vacation rentals? Has anyone been fined in Ko'olau at any activities and have been issued notices of order imposing civil signs, reoccurring violations for illegal S T R in Ko'olau area have been referred to the code compliance branch for fine assessment. The department has collected over sixty thousand dollars of fines assessed by in the O O's issued for illegal short term rentals in the Ko'olau area. Assumption that an illegal S T R would be shut down after a violation has been issued for the property may not provide the most accurate metrics to measure the inactivity of illegal S T Rs. Number five is vacation rules. How many permitted vacation rules are there in Ko'olau? And how many permitted vacation rules are there at Pat's at Poonu? Answer is there are only a few non-conforming use certificates in the Ko'olau area. There are no permitted or registered vacation rules at Pat's at Poonu. And short term rules are not permitted at this property. To date, there have been fifty-two violations of illegal S T Rs issued to the owners of units in Pat's at Poonu. Six. Office of Economic Recovery. This is about rental and utility relief program. Are there any additional funds for the rental and utility relief program? One is the rental utility relief program continues to process applications from December and January. While there is money to fund applications that are approved, no additional funds are currently available for the program. The city understands the communities worry about renters facing challenges. O E R has added programs that can help renters to its its rented help webpage. So there is a rent help webpage and the webpage is W W W dot revitalize Oahu dot org slash rent help. All one word. Need for me to repeat that? Anybody got it? Okay, so. There's also a Good Jobs Hawaii program for eligible Oahu residents, including renters. It can provide free trading for jobs and healthcare technology, clean energy skilled trades, far with the city. Many of these good paying jobs with a career pathway. For more details, visit goodjobhawaii dot org. Seven, Ha'ula Bridge Construction. Request for Ha'ula Bridge repair updates, including project timeline. The rehabilitation of the Ha'ula Bridge, number three, over Ma'akula Stream Project had a pre-final inspection on January fifth, twenty twenty-four. Instruction work is complete. But there are still small contract items to finalize.
They're on the wrong stream.
And we were quite for Paul. Oh, you're right. That's what it is. Access to private properties is open. So they were just talking about. Like who? The bridge is open to the public. But I think probably the question was about the bridge. Yeah, yeah. At the wrong bridge. Okay, eight, festival of the city arts and culture. What is the city's role in the festival of the city arts and culture? This pack is a state-led event where the city is offering co-sponsorship with police, parks, emergency services, and road crews. So this is not led by the city. It's led by the state. That's. That's. Okay. City Councilman Matt Wire, your staffer, are you available?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Oh, and let me say, are there any other questions for the mayor? I have to say that. Yes.
But that town meeting that they had for look, they're also going to be Zoom.
What is last one's on Zoom? Do you know what answer to that? One have to write that down and ask. And we'll put it out in our newsletter if we get the information we have. So we'll ask about the mayor's town hall. Will it be Zoomed? Any other questions, mayor? Online, are there any questions for the mayor? Casey?
Yes, just how can we get a copy of what you just read? Because I'm sorry, I couldn't hear a lot of it about the technical things with vacation rentals. So how can we get a copy of that? Thank you.
I'll see if we can release it because this was the mayor's report. So I would have to ask my people at the office again. It would be on our Google Drive if I could release it. So, okay?
Casey, would you enter? Did you hear him?
Yes, thank you. I can understand that.
Okay, nice. All right. We're going ahead and Councilman Matt Wire.
Is it okay if I just sit here?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Kelly Anaya from Councilman Matt Wire's office. Thank you for having me. Like the newsletter that I passed out, just a couple of things. I'm sorry. We have a couple of Q R codes for the mayor's proposed budgets on the first page. One is for the executive operating budget. The other is for the executive capital budget. Also, Councilman there wanted me to remind everybody if you have any projects or ideas that you would like to. that you would like to see get funded. Has guarantee it's going to get released, but please be sure to get that to our office. We have my staff or my contact number is on the front page as long as along with council members' contact as well.
Can you read that out loud, the number?
I'm sorry. The number? It's seven six eight five zero zero two.
Seven six eight five zero zero two.
The number you have on the board over there. That's awesome.
And I wanted everybody to get it.
No problem. And then on the second page, just a couple legislative updates. Resolution 23162, which passed out of council in January, which establishes or I'm sorry, would amend a city charter to establish a climate resiliency fund. And then Resolution 23239, which council member introduced, passed out of council in February, which established minimum qualifications for the Director of Emergency Management. These proposed charter amendments would help to ensure that the city is prepared for the increased challenges with regards to large weather events and natural disasters. Other updates, Climate Change and Sustainability is now accepting applications for the Climate Champions internship program. It's a part-time paid internship that lasts four months, between five to 20 hours per week, depending on the post site. You can go to climatredoahu.org/climat-champions. Likewise, I have all the QR codes. I'll be sending this newsletter to the MCO as well, so people online can access that as well. Also, if you just Google Councilmember Meyer District 2, you can access his page at the Honolulu City Council website. And then follow-ups from last month. I'm not sure if this is you. I thought I heard Atalina, but somebody was asking about the status of KDA. I believe it was phase four. I don't know if that was you. So right now it's in progress with DCS. They're working with the Army Corps of Engineers regarding the flood map revision. Somebody also asked about the pool at Kahuku and I guess why the public wasn't, I guess, alerted to that. Again, I apologize, I wasn't at that meeting, but if you YouTube it, you can see the mayor discussing, I guess, the meeting in its entirety. And if you fast forward to the 1 minute 41 second mark, he repeats multiple times that they're not sure where the location is. So again, there's no location that has been determined. Let's see. Oh, and then somebody asked about DPP violations at Markoni property about raising fines. Most likely not. It's just discretionary up to the department. I believe the max is a $1,000 fine, but the department has a discretion to charge $200 with the possibility of additional fines if it's not corrected and there's no permit. Generally, fines are to bring the owner into compliance and not to be a punishment mechanism. So if they're not complying, then they generally wrap up fines. That's it for my report. If anyone has any questions for council member.
More questions? I have a question. I wanted to ask if
Do you use the line?
Yeah, I should have it right here. Lily Makaiela, wondering about if I can ask if it's appropriate for concerns about, I guess, zoning issues and weddings and other events taking place in the Ag 2 district? So I got a couple emails. One of them is regarding a posting that was for, I'm not sure if it was short-term rentals, but it was like yurts and other rentals.
Is that the one on my
Puhuli Street?
Yep, yep.
We've already, yeah. Okay, yeah. Okay, and then was that also the wedding?
Yeah.
Okay, so those two, the other one I got emailed about was on Kamaua Highway. I have the TMK.
Okay.
Five three zero zero nine zero six eight. And that one was about fireworks and events taking place on that parcel. It's technically zoned Ag 2. So they would need to, I don't know if it was like commercial activity or whatever it was, but I got an email.
But it wasn't like just regular residential type fireworks?
It was more of a, yeah, it was like a fireworks show.
It's just about searching. It's on Kamaua Highway before Puhuli. They're in the same park. But it's right there on Kamaua Highway and they do have the events and everything there. And then the Puhuli is a new one, is the new one.
So this fireworks thing, is that like every weekend?
It just happened, it was like the past few weekends. I'm not sure if you folks have noticed when you drive.
They had an eightieth birthday party for some local families.
Are you able to send me and is it on Insta?
I can ask. It wasn't, so that one I got like a message to me to follow up on those. I asked if they had pictures, so I could follow up and see if they have anything and then I can.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. And then Auntie Lorraine, did you get pictures of, you sent pictures of? So that one was.
The two are right in that same vicinity when they come out. They're right there.
For us to go check.
Oh, yeah, one's right there and the other's.
It's a CBRE, it's like a condo master. So it was one large landowner and they did like a CBRE for.
Okay. Thank you.
And we gave them listed questions.
Thank you.
Okay, I have another question.
Sure.
About the location of the pool. So there is no determined location of the pool? So it's, okay, but the intention was the pool would be in Ko'ala'oa. Is that correct?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. It was made at the law.
I thought it, oh, I thought it was going to be like at Kahuku.
Yeah.
I think what you're telling, oh, you're saying.
No, somebody said, how come the public wasn't, I guess, I guess, involved as to where the location was going to be, but at the time of, but at the time of last month's meeting. I mean, I didn't, I didn't attend the mayor's meeting about this pool. So when I YouTube'd it, he said that the location has not been determined. The person that was asking, I guess, is under the impression that the mayor had already determined a location for the pool. But according to this meeting that he had, it has not been determined.
Okay, because everybody that was at that meeting the advocates were all asking for it to be at Kahuku Park.
Okay.
But it's just a district park.
Yeah.
And the mention was, we're the only district on Owahu that doesn't have a pool at our district park. And so everyone assumed, I guess, if it's not on the tape, that he meant he was going to do that. He was going to put a pool in at the district park. Is that right, everybody?
Could it be that they just?
Is it a little bit?
Well, I mean, I don't work for the mayor, so I don't know.
Maybe they just don't have any designs or anything?
No.
Sorry, this is.
And I just, I think I can clarify the question. The mayor, it was always at Kahuku. Enough to mean to help me with this. It was always after the town hall meeting, it was verified that it would be at Kahuku District Park. But last month, a community member from Kahuku asked, well, why is it in the park? Why isn't it by the school or, you know, and so there was a question as to where in that area it would be, but it's, but it's still going to be Kahuku is what the mayor's commitment has been.
Yeah, it's going to be in Kahuku. I, but I don't.
At the district park, but someone was saying, well, why should we give up the park? You know, that was something they need to.
The reason he should have it, have the park, is all the district parks have pools. So why not Kahuku, you know? That's, and that's only a block from the school. I've gone a lot further to use another pool.
We have the state champion waterfall.
Rubby. With no pool.
Right.
Okay.
Is there a reason why nobody brought that up to DOE? Because the school is operated by DOE.
Right, and see that's the
So is there?
It's going to be very differently run than a park pool. If you have it at the DOE, it's not going to be as open to the community. Because DOE makes us pay for meeting in their rooms and their schools, they close their campuses, you know, so it's not as available as in order at the park. So that's, that's a difference in governance, you know. It would be with parks and rec versus the DOE school. My opinion. Okay, any other questions? Is everybody finished in the room? Come to me, people online. Jaycee?
Yes, thank you. Before I had asked two other questions. First, there was a new program with extra police in Waikiki to protect the tourists. And they even hired security guards and I asked if Ko'ala'oa could possibly also get any more police? If they have them for the tourists, why not for the locals? And the other thing that I asked before is, are there any homeless outreach workers from the city that come out to this area at all? There's many different programs that's been announced. But so far, we haven't found out any from the city. Were you or is anyone in your office able to tell us that? And then that was from before. Then my new question is, we're seeing more camping and vans, camping, both camping and glamping and vans that are, seem to be allowed to be camping on ag land, like in Laia. So would that be a possibility that we could allow our homeless to do that too? Our houseless families instead of getting fined? Or are these campgrounds or vans that are allowed to park on ag land or are they all illegal that are being advertised so widely?
Okay, so as far I'm sorry, for the HPD.
She's going to give you response.
For the HPD, I'm sorry, I did not get an answer for that, but that's more of like an HPD question. Maybe you could ask the officer. But yeah, I didn't get an answer for that, so I'll have to follow up. As far as the homeless outreach from city departments, I believe DCS, the Department of Community Services would be the proper department, but as far as them coming out to do outreach, I'm not, I cannot confirm that. Generally, I believe I reported it was the H3RC that was the one that got the, or has the, I guess, contract for this area. Are you requesting a specific? I'm sorry, what was that? No, I work for the city. You had asked if there's any homeless outreach from the city departments? That would be Department of Community Service.
Yes, Matt is heading the committee for, from Health and Human Services, so I didn't know if you knew. Because he's heading the committee and I believe that homelessness would fall under his committee. And it doesn't look like HHHRC is assigned from the state and it doesn't look like we have anybody assigned from the city in this whole area. Thank you. If there is anyone we've missed, love to know about it.
Okay, well, the other, you know, you could also call Core. I don't have that number offhand, but I'll go ahead and get that. Core is the, I just seem to call it like the outreach. But again, generally, it was my understanding that it would be the H3RC that would be doing the outreach. And then, I'm sorry, your last question, you're asking if can allow homeless to quote unquote camp on ag lands? Is that my understanding?
Right now, there are a lot of advertisements for van camping on ag lambs and camping and glamping on ag lambs.
That's illegal.
That, they're both illegal?
That's actually not allowed.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's, yeah, that's not allowed. No, yeah, I mean, it's illegal, but I'm not understanding, you said something about allowing homeless to camp?
Yeah, if, so you think it's illegal. It's ongoing.
Isn't it illegal?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from online? No, so I'll go ahead. Thank you very much.
Can I ask another question before?
Oh, sure.
So I met Matt Meyer sometime back when Wana'ua was being blessed for the Hully. So I met with him regarding Kahana and our real property tax in Kahana and I wanted him to know whether he could take some steps to address my concerns. Kahana was condemned in 1965 by the state of Hawaii, over 5,200 acres. We live on leased lands, we had to fight to remain to live there. But our real property tax is no different than everybody else's real property tax, so I'm kind of dying every month paying $350 real property tax versus a mortgage because I'm done with my mortgage. But I want to know what is the fairness in this all? Why are we on leased lands having to be the same thing like everybody else on real property tax? That own their house and own their land. That was my issue with Matt and telling him, I still haven't heard from him. I'd like to have a follow-up on it. Because I'm asking a question that nobody is coming out of their shell if they're going to ask. Because I don't know whether the people of the real property tax is not, but I am. And so I'm concerned about it.
Okay, I'm learning.
What the heck should we pay on leased land? Give us back our land. I don't mind paying the real property tax if we own the land as well as our home. That's the issue.
Okay, thank you.
Beirne, B-E-I-R-N-E.
So I haven't come for a while. We're going ahead now to 371, the US House of Representatives, Jennifer Goodness, that person. Are you here? Is you on? Not online.
What's your name again? Sorry.
Jennifer Gooden.
Kelly Anaya.
Sorry, no, someone from
Oh, Kelly Anaya.
Kelly Anaya.
Anaya is answering questions for Matt Meyer. Okay, we'll go ahead to the Governor's rep, Crystal. Are you here? No one? Senator Brittenow.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Neighborhood Board. My name is Elizabeth Satofitovaki. I am representing Senator Brittenow's office. I'm his legislative aide and I will be giving his monthly report. As of as of now, we're currently still in the middle of session. We've already reached the halfway mark. A lot of our Senate bills have already transferred over to the House, unfortunately, not specifically for Senator Wa. Our Senate Bill 2617 is probably the only measure from our Senate bills that had transferred over to the House and that measure was preventing foreigners from purchasing land. That measure has amended drastically into a study. As of right now, we have resolutions. We have a couple of our resolutions being heard on the floor tomorrow on the Senate floor, chamber floors, one of them including preventing alcohol or the consumption of alcohol in the state Capitol, as well as requiring other legislators to grow food trees out in their districts during the legislative session. Speaking of food trees, Senator Wa, as well as the staff, are currently working on trying to grow some food trees out in Ha'ula Community Park. We've hit a few obstacle courses, but we're currently still trying to work through it with city parks. If there's, I think that's the update as of now. If there's no other concerns or questions, I can take back to the senator. That's all I have. Thank you, guys.
Or any questions for some? Or any questions for some of the laws? Yes. Angela.
Hello, Elizabeth. My name is Atalina. Just last month, we went to the blessing of the Kohaleh in Kamelhef, the houseless community that's being managed by Project Vision Hawaii. I was just wondering, would Senator Ava be working on something similar for the houseless community within Koholaua?
I do. Thank you for, hi, Atalina, thank you, nice to meet you. I do know that Senator Awal does support the Kohaleh. As to specifically having the Kohaleh set up in Koholaua? That I can't, I don't have an answer for. I think the governor's rep would probably know more information on other locations that the Kohaleh would possibly set up in. But I definitely will take that question back with me and have an update next month.
Thank you. Could you also let him know that we really need one? So that our houseless community can stay warm, fed, and healthy. It's really important to have shelter. Shelter helps to provide confidence and it helps them to, you know, be productive members of our community. And it's hard for us to. It's hard for us to do outreach within our community when all of the services are so Honolulu-centric. All of the homeless shelters are in Honolulu, they're in Waikiki. They're an hour away from here. So working with the houses communities, most of them want to stay within the community because that's where they feel most supported. Going out into Honolulu, they don't really. It's hard to build relationships with caseworkers who just work eight hours when they have a community here that they've known all their life. So if we could, that would be awesome.
I got all that information down. I will also message you for your contact information, just so that I can reach out to you directly as well as updating the board and the community.
Mahalo, Britten has my number.
Catherine Heath has a question. I'm just gonna, part of her questions that are answered about houselessness in the community. And the other question, part of the question she has is tourism invasion for Senator Awal. Is she something?
Yes, tourism invasion, that's my term for it. Had the misfortune to be stuck behind just one too many buses and one too many tourists. And tourists who seem to think the word highway means that they can stand on it, take photographs of whatever they wish and feel they don't have to worry about being hit. The tourists are have been hit a point of excess. And we need to look at culling the number that come around the island. And I'm serious. I, I, I'm deadly serious. We have too many. We need to limit the number of tourists who are doing circle island tours in some fashion for the health and sanity of all of those who live on this single road. Thank you. And I'd like to know what he was gonna do about it.
Yes, Senator Awal's rep, are you still here?
Yes, I'm still here. Thank you, Catherine. I've taken down your concern. I will, I will go back with this to Senator Awal. I will come back to the community as well as yourself if I can get your contact information so that we can reach out to you directly, but also update the community as well.
Thank you. Casey, final first question?
In the same vein, is the senator had done a beautiful video on a woman having, a family having an illegal vacation rental in Laiea, right across from PCC? We didn't know if that was settled. We're very concerned that the vacation rentals keep growing and the local population keeps shrinking. Is this senator working on any initiatives that we can support him in? When I look at Kohuku High School, maybe eight years ago, it was eighteen hundred students. And I think it's down to thirteen, some thirteen nine or something. So that would be a drop of twenty percent in about eight years. Is he aware of that? Where, how? Hawaiian students, so families? What, what is he doing to help us keep our Hawaiian and local families? And to stop the vacation rentals? Thank you.
Okay, that question, those two questions were for Brittenawal's representative. So. Are you there?
I'm still here, thank you. I took him out of information. I, I do know that as well as his own legislative measures, he has supported a handful of legislative measures that have transferred over to the House that does support the initiative of controlling the short-term rentals. I could, I will look into that and I'll send that information to you on what bills are still alive and well.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going on now to State House Rep Sean Quinlan. Three minutes, Sean, are you here?
Hello, everyone. Good evening, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Excellent. So you might be wondering, why am I still at my office at eight o'clock on a Thursday? It's actually some of the things we've been discussing. This folder is five hundred pieces of testimony on SB two nine one nine, which I will be hearing in my committee tomorrow. SB two nine one nine is the best attempt that the state legislature has made in decades at controlling short-term rentals. We aim to give the powers back to the counties to make explicit in the Hawaii revised statutes that counties do have absolute zoning power. And if they have given an entitlement or granted an entitlement, such as the ability to short-term rent, that the counties also have the power to take it away. The need for this legislation arose when the city and county of Honolulu was successfully sued last year. It was actually, quite frankly, a lot of my colleagues assumed that the counties already have this power. I think that it was an oversight by past legislatures that we did not make explicit the county zoning power. And it is my hope, and perhaps I'm too optimistic, but it is my hope that the counties will use this power for good and significantly curtail the amount of short-term rentals that we have. Because it's not just about our housing market. It's not just about revenues to the state. This is a moral imperative. And as a legislator, my first priority must always be the person with no home. Not the person that has two at least already. So we will be passing out this measure despite the hundreds of pieces of testimony in opposition tomorrow around nine thirty AM. The second subject I want to talk about is we have a great bill this year about the Hawaii Visitor Mobile App. I think my staff has talked about it a lot, so I'll be really brief. But essentially, we'd like the visitors, the tourists, to download a mobile app. Because the goal is to convert a lot of our county and state parks to reservation only for the tourists. For us, it will still be free. We will make sure to reserve a number of parking spots based on community input. Based on community input. This is not going to be me or the DLNR or county parks telling communities how much space they need for locals to park. This will be the communities coming to the county parks departments, to state parks, to myself, telling us how many spaces we need in our parks so that we can actually enjoy the parks that our tax dollars pay to maintain. It is my hope that this will, I mean, listen, this will take four, five, six years to totally implement. Because we're creating the app, we're converting parks to reservation systems. But it is my hope that if we execute this plan well and faithfully, that we will reduce the traffic in our beach parks. We will spread things out. We will reduce the burden and we will improve our personal quality of life. Because I gotta be honest, guys, like, I've said it before, but you know, my, my son loves his grandmother. And he always wants to go visit her at like two o'clock in the afternoon on a Saturday. I live in Halei, but she lives at Sunset. And I have to tell my son, we can't go see Pohopon today because I don't want to sit in traffic for an hour with a screaming five-year-old with no cellphone service where he can't even watch his iPad. I'm sorry.
Speed on your fitness already, so did you have any final comments?
Oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry. I went over the limit. Okay, real briefly, there are a lot of concerns about speed bumps. I had my staff look into it. We reached out to some folks in the fire department. What we have found is that the six speed bumps between Kohuku Fire Station and the beginning of Laiea added additional one minute and six seconds of response time. That breaks down to eleven seconds of added travel time for a speed bump. Every minute of not hooking up an AED to someone who's suffering a heart attack drops survivability by ten percent. So for every ten cardiac arrest calls in Laiea, it's a possibility that one additional person will die. There are other figures like wear and tear on the trucks, but I'll just leave it at that for now. Mahalo for your time.
Thank you very much. We're gonna hear from Mel Chung later from DOT about this very issue, I'm sure. So, thank you. Any questions for?
Sean, and also the Neighborhood Board, if this has already been asked in some of the minutes, please just let me know. I don't want to take up much more time. But I'm wondering what the legislature is doing to disincentivize off-island homeownership, absentee ownership of homes and, and, and homes that are not being purchased for primary residence.
The legislature's ability to effect that is somewhat limited in large part due to the US Constitution. I really do support Senator Awal's initiative to curtail foreign home investment, but there are a raft of constitutional issues with that measure. The real power lies with the counties because they are able to set different property tax rates for things like vacant homes, for things like second homes. And I've been pushing for a long time for the counties to create separate brackets. And by the way, while they're taxing the second homeowner and the non-resident homeowner more, how about we can freeze property taxes for people when they reach the age of sixty-five?
I agree.
Wouldn't that be wonderful? Okay, any other questions?
I mean, also, if we can direct that question to the city and county, but they're all gone.
They're gone. Yeah, okay. Any other questions? Board or community online? Any questions? Okay.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you very much.
Johnny, can I just get a question in to Sean? Real quick. Hey, Sean.
Hi.
You remember me, don't you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I haven't seen you for quite a while, you know? You know, so just passing this on. We don't want to be changed from state parks to agriculture. So just know that. And, and the chairman has not issued, I mean, taken care of the issue with us in Kahana. For the fourteen that are still waiting, I mean, you know, for those that are waiting to, to receive leases. So stay on it, please. You know, she says the attorney general this and attorney general that. But you know what? We're all human beings out there, you know? We're busing our courage, trying to keep culture going. So keep us posted, will you?
Will do, Antuulu. And, and two things.
Very much.
The, the rezoning to agricultural land was merely an idea. And I would never have advocated for it without the consent of the Kahana residents. The second part, board action. I, I did not ever think that it would happen this quickly. But I will continue to work with the department and I will try to hurry them up as much as I can. You have my promise on that.
Yeah, listen, we don't mind the egg, the egg consideration. But you know, when we get to be Kupuna Asian, we can't farm anymore. We don't want to be Oise just like Wa'holi Valley. Okay, so take that into consideration. Mahalo.
Understood.
Thank you very much. Good questions. Okay, the next, we're going into presentations. And the first is on the. And who's that? Introduce yourself and stand out in line, okay? Bye.
Okay, so we're just passing out for people so it can see better the slides. And there's also a letter of support that we're proposing for the board to vote on. So we'll get to that at the end. I prefer if you don't read it now, we'll read through it at the, at the end. And so, Mahalo, Atalina. I'm here with Atalina, although Atalina is now a board member as well. And, you know, on behalf of KCA, helping to represent, I'm with the North Shore Community Land Trust. My name is Kaleo Hano Parant. I grew up in Palma Lou near Aki Point. I still live out there today. I am here on behalf of the North Shore Community Land Trust as a employee. And I helped to work on our North Shore Trails project, as we call it, which essentially is a project to advocate for various multi-use trails along the North Shore of Oahu. Our mission area is from Kohuku to Ka'ena. So that is where we're focusing our attention. We're also generally concerned with the entire, well, hope that this connects to other trail systems around the island of Oahu. And it's not just deep trails, but we also hope to support our coastal trails or upland trails that are also very important. And part of this is about supporting that larger network. And I'm glad if we have Senator Awal, Rep Quinlan, and Councilmember Wire. Although I think, I know Kelly had to leave, but still here too. I plan to follow up with them, HDOT and others, as we discuss this further. But to hint at the conclusion, I'm hoping that a very simple letter of support we drafted might be supported by the Koholaua Neighborhood Board so that as we go through those other entities to gain their support and also to look for funding, we can get, demonstrate strong support. So we're partly coming with KCA's strong support already, as we've had presentations at their group. And so now I'm here to share a bit today. And I'll try to be fairly brief and you have the pictures of the proposed area in front of you. So many of you would be familiar with the area in question, which serves the intermediate high school as well as the elementary school. Here's a outline of what we will be talking about, the area of interest. On the left-hand side of the screen, you see Pualalea Street near the elementary school. The solid line shows where there is an existing path that could use improvements and an extension along the city road, which we are talking to the city about improving. And then along Kamehameha Highway, there's one mile of existing informal pathway that we hope to formalize and make safer. So here, we'll go on a little virtual tour. And this is near the elementary school. Some of the improvements that some people are hoping to make would be creating more visibility for this crosswalk by extending the path, Moka, across the entirety of the school, which would prevent cars blocking the, the crosswalk and visibility for the youth and families. Here, we're just gonna show going down Makai towards the highway along the street. You can see that there is this existing pathway. There are concerns about it being ADA compliant and for people, especially in wheelchairs. And so that's what we want to work with the city on as well. And we actually made some early contact with them to have a site visit soon. Here at the highway, we see it becomes the wide shoulder that's mostly mixed grass and dirt. It narrows with the asphalt shoulder near the crosswalk at the high school. And we have a nice-looking shoulder here on the far right. But beyond that, it becomes gravel, dirt, and little bit asphalt, broken asphalt pathway towards Ma'la'ihahana. And it only gets more sloped and similar to, you get to the Ma'la'ihahana Bridge. And across the bridge, there's a little bit more shoulder until you reach the wonderful Ma'la'ihahana path. And part of the hope of many community members is that instead of needing to drive to get to this path from Kohuku Town, they feel comfortable with their families and kids going from anywhere in Kohuku all the way along this pathway, extending it. Of course, there's possibilities to continue extending it through Laiea and hopefully a larger trail system, as I mentioned. And I also hope while it's not. And I also hope while it's not amazing now, the quality of the, the area along the shoulder, it should be a fairly simple project that many can get behind to simply formalize a path that has been well-used and existing. So in summary, it's one mile long along the Kamehameha Highway. It's mentioned that Oahu Bike Plan, which helps to show that there's been, uh, note and support of this, uh, area in the past. And we are suggesting those improvements along Pu'alalea Street. It serves both of these two schools and it's already well-used and connects to an existing path, the one in Ma'ala' Kahana. And in, um, conclusion, I would like to read through this draft, uh, letter of support, which I believe if there were comments or suggestions to edit by the, um, board, those could be made and then perhaps voted upon after, um, in addition to any questions about the presentation and letter. So just for clarity, I'll read the current draft. So to whom it may concern, the Ko'ola Loa Neighborhood Board strongly supports the planning and design of a one-mile bike and pedestrian path in Kahuku along Kamehameha Highway from the northern end of Ma'ala' Kahana Bike and Pedestrian Path to Kahuku District Park, as well as improvements to the existing path along Pu'alalea Street as proposed by the Kahuku Community Association in collaboration with the North Shore Community Land Trust. An informal path currently exists in this area and is consistently used by residents for recreation and transportation, including students commuting to Kahuku Elementary School as well as Kahuku Intermediate and High School, despite uneven surfaces and close proximity to the highway. A formal path will increase the safety and accessibility of this route, which aligns with the state of Hawaii and city and county of Honolulu's legal obligations to increase safety and access for all users of public highways. Further, this project will cultivate community resilience through its long-term contributions to well-being and connectivity. This letter of support has been duly discussed, considered, and voted upon in the affirmative by the Ko'ola Loa Neighborhood Board on March 14th, 2024, of course, subject to its actual approval, if you folks vote and choose to approve it. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions, comments, and then perhaps, I'm not sure how exactly it would work, but any motions if you folks feel so inclined to vote upon the letter. Mahalo ni, again, my name is Kaleo Hano.
Thank you very much. Presentation, any board members have questions?
I have a comment. Um, because we've been talking about the swimming pool that would be at Kahuku District Park, the continuation, I've walked that path many a time from Laia to Kahuku. And the continuation of the Ma'ala' Kahana Bike Path to the District Park makes even more sense when we're talking about having the pool there because kids from the high school would, you know, bike and things. And so I just want to say that I would, that, that makes sense.
Others?
I, I just want to say that I think it's a great idea and I really love, I love the Ma'ala' Kahana path. And, and I think I, is, is there any discussion of actually continuing to get down the coast?
That, that is part of what, um, we are advocating for in general, a larger trail system that pending community discussions about a path, uh, past Kahuku towards the Sunset Beach area. We are generally supportive of expanding access and because of its many benefits to community relationship to place, to people, health, et cetera.
How about in this direction?
In the other direction?
In our direction.
In the case of, in, in that case, um, as far as the North Shore Community Land Trust has been, um, current in our, in terms of our current work, we've yet to partner with anyone in, um, the Laia Ha'ula direction because it's outside of our mission area as a nonprofit. But I'd be very interested to, uh, talk and discuss with anyone and maybe partner with organizations that are, um, in the Laia Ha'ula area to talk about expanding in that direction.
Thank you for that. Who, who might they be? Do you know?
No, yeah, I think, I think we should look into that.
Any other questions in the board? Question, um, what is the width? Do you know, do you have a design? Basically, what, what, what is the width and, um, and will it be asphalt? What about the signage along the road? Sometimes it's in the way. Does, uh, the state and city work with you on those things? Uh, will there be marking like a regular, you know, downtown, the incredible marking for the bypass? Um, will it be that kind of thing too? Those are the questions I have.
So, uh, part of the letter of support and us going around to gain support for the project is, as the letter states, um, planning and design that still needs to be done for path before it can reach a construction phase. And so we don't have specific engineering plans for sure and, um.
Do you have to have one in EA there?
Uh, there may need to be an EA done that's part of the preliminary engineering for a path that isn't already on existing paved area. And this is while, while obviously affected by the roadway, probably in an area of needing some environmental, um, studies as well as just other engineering concerns. And so, uh, our hope is to get funding since that kind of planning study needs, um, funding. And so we're looking to different sources for that in addition to the construction. And, uh, I, I tried to highlight here in the letter, um, supporting planning and design because I don't expect you folks to support, uh, the construction of the project until there are actual plans for the specific, uh, alignment and materials and striping and signage. So, uh, this is mainly to support that planning and design process. But the typical trend and the hope is that, um, this will be a shared use path, which typically means at least eight to 10 feet wide and, uh, two ways and probably striped as such, so that there's two lanes essentially. Uh, all around Oahu, I've mostly only seen asphalt, so that's probably expected that it will be asphalt. And, um, that there's a signage and working around some of the constraints like utility poles is not, um, undoable at all. Signage for sure, but utility poles, even in Waialua, there's examples of working around that.
Any other questions? Um, yes.
Could, could I get the name of your nonprofit and your website?
Yeah, sure. So North Shore Community Land Trust. And, and our, uh, website would be northshorland.org.
And do you have a sister organization that, that land trust, the community land trust that does this area as its mission?
Uh, is there a land trust that does this area?
Yeah.
The Hawaii Islands Land Trust, um, although I don't know if I got the appropriate, the re-ordered, renamed, but, um, Hilt, H L T or H I L T, uh, is a land trust that does work, I think with Ma'ala' Laia and others. So they might be, um, it doesn't require a land trust to do this work though, because we essentially will not build any path ourselves. And we're not actually looking to get the conservation easement or anything for this land. We're just advocating for, uh, the city and state on their roads to, um, get the funding and approvals to build pathways. Yeah.
So you're planning for the city to actually think of this?
No, the, uh, city is, uh, some, we have some people we're talking to about improvements along the city road. And then the state highway would be under HDOT and, um, the payment and funding is, there's a lot of ways that we might look at how to fund it because, um, it's unclear if HDOT themselves will just decide to find their own funding for it or whether we need to help them get a grant for it.
Okay, Lucy?
Yeah, um, just, just a consideration, I, I, I love the idea. But, uh, I'm assuming, or perhaps incorrectly, that you have a design development and construction, um, unit that, that you're looking at to carry this out. Uh, the only reason I would ask is that when I was looking at the pathway, uh, you might want to consider including the pathway with another purpose besides just transportation, walking. It's also an alternative transportation when the roads get congested during a disaster. Because I've, I've seen on islands that I've been on, when those roads get, people start walking and usually there are no sidewalks, or if they are, they're very, very difficult to, to transverse. But having this kind of very specific design, not only will it accommodate the, the social flow and recreational flow, but it might be of consideration as a alternative for disaster movement, evacuation, things of that nature.
I think that's a, a great point. I appreciate that.
Okay, um, there's a question from online. Do we, we have it, anything that before we have a motion?
Uh, so mostly we would have done originally was have a motion if they want to adopt the residential shift. And then we were supposed to have discussion afterwards.
No, we had our discussion.
But it's to be passed to the, the slide, the slide, what we can do, we start to, there's been a resolution.
Resolution, okay. Um, so we would have to have, um, someone votes in second?
Yes, a motion.
Motion for the resolution?
I propose.
I second.
Okay, Atalina actually got it, got a hit of me.
She's new, let her have it.
Yeah, I second.
And, um, so do we have to do roll calls?
Well, um, this goes into, uh, when it's to public testimony, so Catherine can ask. Oh, so Catherine.
Ask your question then. Okay, Catherine? Online?
Uh, yeah, I'm here. Uh, my question is pretty simple. I'm all for, um, a pathway for the bikes. I just wanted to know if there would be some corresponding effort for enforcement of having bike riders actually utilize the bike path and not the highway. Um, in that we have a lot of signage like, uh, please walk your bikes across the, um, across the bridge, never happens, uh, no jumping from the bridge, doesn't happen. So it's nice to have these options, but if there's not going to be any enforcement, we're still going to be facing as drivers, the same dangerous situations, uh, where we have, you know, groups of people who like to ride their bikes on the highway for joys and exercise. And I, I just really think they should be held to using bike paths. And I hope that that would be included in the consideration of an extended bike, bike path. That once available, that's what needs to be used, not the highway. That's all. Is that looked at at all?
Yeah, we, we have not looked into that, but I, it is a great point that once you have a bike path, even more so, it, it gives us a safe, better option, whether or not that's something that people already riding on the highway are interested in. And the enforcement of it probably will only improve with, with the bike path there.
Good ideas. Thank you, Catherine.
Well, I just haven't noticed that it has adjusted the riding on the highway, even though we have that bike path. Um, in the Ma'ala' on a stretch. No, it doesn't. Yeah, it, it has, so I would like to see that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Okay, um, so now we can, it's a roll call?
Yeah, we can do a roll call.
Okay, let's just do it. Um, let's go ahead and start up there with Atalina.
Lily, no, yes?
Yes, okay. Um.
Lily. Say your name and.
Lily Makayla, yes.
Rebecca Carlson, yes?
Tucia Avila Leo, yes.
Lorraine Azin Muffany, yes.
Michael, yes.
Yes.
Yep, motion passes.
Is there a golden buzzer somewhere?
Very good. Um, thank you very much and we wish you success of luck. We'll get ahold of you when we find out how much it's costing.
Yes, I'm sure we'll be in touch, yeah. And there's actual plans to share, it's pretty great.
Yeah, that'd be great to come back and run stuff. We appreciate it.
Yeah, and if you don't feel inclined to keep the presentation, I'd be more than happy to collect that and reuse it.
It's a beautiful copy. Very nice. Thank you very much.
This is maybe mine. Thank you so much. Here you go. Here we go.
That's a good one. We used your presentation.
I know, that's brilliant.
Yeah. Okay.
That was the one about. Yeah, yeah, that was.
So. Next is our presentation on the Ko'ala Loa Department of Transportation Project Updates and presenter Mel Chung. And, um, please, um, go ahead, Mr. Chung, and give your presentation.
Hi, um, can you hear me?
Yes. Oh, this is Mel, okay.
Hi. Hi, um, okay, my name is Mel Chung. I'm from Department of Transportation. Um, it's not a presentation, but then I want to give some project updates for the project that we have in the Ko'ala Loa Neighborhood. The first project that I will, I want to give update is the, um, the Ka'ava revestment that across Ka'ava Elementary. So that project, we finished the design, pretty much finished the design. And we will have a Board of Natural Resources meeting on next Friday, March 22nd. So if that, if the land board approved this project, uh, we're anticipating this project will be ready to advertise in this summer. Uh, in additions, we are working with the Ka'ava Elementary School student. We will have an activity to plan native plants on Ka'ava, um, beach park to slow down the erosion in April. So it's an Irish project that we have with the school. The next project. Okay, I guess, the next project that I want to give update is the KKPH, which is the big project, is the, um, Ko'ala, Ka'ava, Punalu'u and Ha'ula, our shoreline mitigation project. We are doing a draft EA. It will be ready in one or two months. Once it's ready, I will go to, um, I will come back again in the Neighborhood Board meeting and hopefully do a presentation at that time, but we don't have it ready yet, but it should be out pretty soon. The next one.
What Neighborhood Board meeting do you think that would be for?
I'm sorry, could you please repeat?
Do you know what neighborhood, what timeframe, what month would that be for the Neighborhood Board?
Okay, um, if not, the next one should be the following. So within one or two months, the EA should be ready.
Okay.
Hmm. I know my re- video is not working, maybe I just turned it off. Okay, the next one is the Ha'ula. So, um, last year, we started a project to take, to take away the cura bed, which is a big bed with the small rock inside. Uh, we wanted to take, remove all those cura bed and put in a bigger rock revestment over there to protect the shoreline better. Um, in the Ha'ula stress, there's four memorials on the shoulders. Um, I'm just wondering if you, if any of you know the families, we would like to work with the family to see if we can temporarily relocate it so we can take away the cura bed. Um, if you know the family, could you please let me know? I will put my email address in the checkbox.
Yes, if you do that, we'll look into it and see families possibly.
Thank you, thank you. There's four memorials over there, but we have to relocate it because we have to wish the cura bed. The next one is, um, speed tables. Yes, we do, I mean, there's a pro. Yes, we do, I mean, there's a pro and pros and cons in the speed table, which is a speed bomb, yeah. We're actually designing three more. Yes, two humps. So it's one in Punalu'u and one in Ha'ula. The one in Punalu'u is fronting the Kaya store and Queen Liliu'ukulani Children's Center because there's student crossing. And the one in Ha'ula is at like Ahinalu Place, Ha'ula Kai Center area. So we are completing the design, should be ready to, the design should be able to, we should be able to complete the design by end of April.
Where's that, you're having this drink again, where do you plan that?
Okay, I'm sorry, okay. The first one in Punalu'u is fronting Kaya store and Queen Liliu'ukulani Children's Center.
Are there going to be two or just one?
Yeah, there will be two on each. So there will be two speed table over there. And then the another two set will be at Kamehameha Highway and Ahinalu Place. Ha'ula Kai Center.
Yeah, Ha'ula Shopping Center.
Ha'ula Shopping Center. We'll have questions after this.
Yes, so that will be total four, two at each location. We don't know when the construction is, we need to, we need to, we need to coordinate. Yeah, that's it. Any questions?
Yes, we're going to have questions from the board first. Yes, Atalina.
Aloha, Mel. My name is Atalina. I was just wondering, is there any, any, like, can we have community meetings before you make these big decisions to put speed humps in our community? And also with the, the bag of rocks that you guys are going to replace and put bigger rocks, can we also have a community meeting to talk about strategies that have worked in the past? And because we have a lot of lived experience and a lot of our kupuna have been here for so long, and we understand what's worked, what hasn't worked, and what best serves our community, is there a way that we can have a talk story with you folks?
Okay, I can let our administration know, but like, we did have like two town hall or three town halls with Senator Awa's office to talk about the, our, you know, shoreline projects. But we definitely can reach out to them and set up another town hall to talk about it.
Did you say yes?
Yes.
Because we're in Ha'ula, my question is, you're planning on removing the bags of rock?
Right.
And what our request was to put three man rocks there, not little bitty rocks.
Yes, thicker ones.
Man rocks, much bigger, yes. So, and, and we would like for you to come for a town hall and give us a description of that process and when us are, for us to provide more input if at all possible.
So I think I can explain a little bit more for the Ha'ula project. We actually started this last year. It's in construction, but then, but we got the emergency CDA from OCL to do the job. We tried to put a shaker rock because we know the cura bed is like sliding down to the ocean is an immediate need, so we need to like remove it and put better, better protection over there, but we do not expect this to be a permanent midterm solution. It's just to hold it as long as we could because we do not want to disrupt the shoulder much. So this is a short-term solution that we came up with. And then for the KKPH, Kamehameha Shoreline Erosion Mitigation at Ko'ala'ua, Ka'ava, Punalu'u, and Ha'ula. So that one, we have a EA, we're doing a EA, will be ready soon. And then it's going to be a common period. So we will solicit comments from the community. And with, at that time, it's like, we're really looking forward to your comments.
Is it possible to also include a discussion on that at a town hall? You can wrap these all together in one town hall if you like.
Sure.
On the shoreline work. Okay, any other, yes, Lauren?
Hi, this is Lorraine. Thank you, Mel, for your report. My question is, we just had Rep. Quinlan on talking about the delay that the speed bumps are causing to our first responders. And so when you're talking about, and I'm a little confused as to why if you add one speed bump, you have to have two. If there's one speed bump in front of Kaya's and the QLCC, which I'm assuming they're thinking QLCC, which is currently not in use, will be in use later. But why does there have to be two? And again, also, Ha'ula Shopping Center, if you have two, if you count the number of speed bumps from Ko'ala'ua, just even to Kahuku Hospital, that is a lot of speed bumps. And what I've noticed is people are actually getting more annoyed and driving more dangerously. They're overtaking, they're crossing on the yellow, on the double yellow lines because they're so frustrated at the delays with the speed bumps. So that's just my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mel, Mrs. Dottie? Speed bumps are now the bad guy in our Ko'ala'ua. Everybody is talking about how many speed bumps we have. And I really think before you put one more speed bump out, you need to come out here and talk to people about these speed bumps and get them to understand our community. We are, you know, we are, there, a lot of people are very, very upset. And like Lorraine was just saying, pointing out, we acknowledge that there are some places that might be speed bumps, like the crosswalk, because people tend not to stop at crosswalks and let pedestrians go across. So a speed bump is nice at a crosswalk, but at every entrance to every place along the road, that just drives people nuts. And I think when you have people not driving around, it's not so good for mental health and for the traffic either.
Mel, thanks for coming and sharing with us. I think we asked the same thing of the city, but they have only jurisdiction over one speed bump. Well, will the Department of Transportation be coming back to us in a year to report on any statistics or metrics of the impact of the speed bumps on accidents, deaths, pedestrian hits, and so on?
I would, I mean, I, I think this is totally valid, because I don't know too much about the speed bump. And I could let the administration know and your request. So you want us to come back and show the statistic after the installation of speed bump, right? So I can look it up.
And, and I don't know whether this will, yeah, pariah, but I, I think a certain amount of speed bumps, I think, are really helpful.
Yeah.
And I think just having them in the right place, and we've been talking about the crosswalk from the Seven Eleven out of Beach Park, that might be an appropriate place for a speed bump.
One.
One, just one. And I know there's been a lot of discussion and support for at least a crosswalk, but it still hasn't happened. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rebecca, you have a question?
Yes. Yeah, hi, Mel. This is Rebecca. I know you just said you don't know a lot about the speed bumps, but do you happen to know how the locations are chosen? Are studies done, are surveys done? What kind of thought is put into where the speed bumps go and how many we have?
It's a great question.
That's a very good question.
Yeah, sorry, I'm not from the traffic department, so I don't really know, but I heard that it was from, it was requested to put in. But I can get back to you because I really don't know the full story.
Yeah, if you could look into that and have an answer for us, that would be great.
Okay, thank you.
I think that would go a long way if people understand the algorithm, exactly what your reasoning is and why you put them there. I think that will go a long way to helping people.
Thank you. Will do.
Yes, okay.
Hi, Mel. This is Lily Makayila. Thank you for being here this evening. I was wondering if you could share what branch of DOT is oversees the installation of these speed bumps?
Traffic.
The, is it the traffic branch?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm not sure if you can answer this, but can you speak to what source of funding these speed bumps come from? Is there a specific line item in the budget where these speed bumps come from?
Sorry, I'm not too sure.
Okay, if you're able to follow up on that, I'm curious if this was allocation put into the budget when kind of annual operating budget is put in? And if this was put in as a specific project for this area, because it seems like it's kind of targeting a lot of this, you know, Kamehameha Highway on the windward side? Or if this is pulling from like a revolving fund or from the regular operating budget? I'm just curious to see what source of funding is paying for the speed tables that are being put in? I had another question, so I'm not sure that you would be able to answer this, but I did want to mention that for county roads, there is a process to apply for speed bumps, and that requires a traffic analysis. It also requires that certain speed bumps be placed in areas where it's within a certain speed limit, and it also requires consultation with property owners that are adjacent to the speed bump. And so it's very concerning for people of Ko'ala'ua that the state does not have to follow any of that process when it comes to the installation of these speed bumps. We understand that the state and the county are different, but I feel like the county has a much better model as far as getting consultation and ensuring that there is not kind of undue burden or undue distress on the county or on the community where these speed bumps are being installed. So if you wouldn't mind mentioning that to administration, that we in general kind of buck the process or lack thereof, and would ask that HDOT traffic branch model, consider modeling after the county in how they put in their traffic calming measures. Thank you, Mel.
Okay, noted. Thank you.
One last question for you, um, from the board. How much does a speed bump cost? Do you know?
I don't want to give a wrong number, so can I get back to you next time?
Yeah, you sure can. Okay. We have a few hands up. Was there somebody on the board? Okay. I see Ella, your hand is up.
Oh, yes. I would just like to thank the person who just spoke for having the tolerance to keep cool. I really appreciate that, and I would like to apologize to everyone because this is all our fault. Many years ago, we requested a crosswalk, a crosswalk from the beach park at Ha'ula to the Seven Eleven, so that people were not jaywalking across the street. We also asked that they decrease the speed limit from 35 to 25 to accommodate all the people walking around from the park to the streets on the other side. Everyone's getting the speed bumps except us. Everyone's getting crosswalks except us. I apologize.
Next question, Catherine, please.
I'm really curious. One, I, I feel, I apologize that they sent you here to be faced with all these questions and ire, and knowing full well that you wouldn't have the answers we were wanting tonight because we're riding on this road. I myself do it four times a week. I was wondering, you used the word "design project", and you know, you talk about environmental assessments for a bike path. Well, I don't think either of those things were done, or I'm asking, were they done for these speed tables? Want to use my language correctly, because I can send you, and if you will drop your email, in photographs of ponding that's now occurring to where it was not occurring, because those speed humps have been in there and are capturing the water. And it seems to me there was a failing in the design of that amongst other things. And I would also like to know at whose request were these put out there? I would think it's perhaps more likely that there was a lawsuit and that the request came from outside the community and was a fiscal hit against the state, and we don't have the real truth. And if that's what the truth is, then we should hear it. And we all know how many deaths there have been on the highway. And if that's the cost, then let's be honest to the people, all right? Not just put speed humps and aggravate people, because Dottie is right, it is making people angry. And on top of that, you have slow tourists, and the anger is growing, and it is going to result in something very sad. Thank you for coming tonight and hearing our words.
Thank you for your comment. My email is in the checkbox. Thank you.
Okay, no more questions, and we'll. Oh, I'm sorry, let's say it again, Julie.
Can you hear me?
Thank you.
Okay, there are currently nine speed humps between Hygienic Store and Ha'ula Elementary. Now they propose adding one, four more?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, there are 13 humps from Ha'ula, and not counting Ha'ula Elementary, from that area to the end of Kahuku, because there's none at Turtle Bay yet. There's 13 already, and they want to add, what, two or four more?
And there's five at Ko'ala'ua, right?
Yeah.
There's five at Ko'ala'ua.
But between Hygienic Store and Ha'ula Elementary, there is currently nine. And they want to add more by Kaya's. There are 13 from Ha'ula Elementary to the Kahuku Hospital, and they want to add how many more?
Four.
And really, all this is doing is causing tremendous frustration. I've had people pass me between the two humps at Kekelas, only to get ahead of me, and he was still just ahead of me when I pulled off at the shrimp farms. And it's this kind of stuff that is going to cause more accidents, more frustration. That's 45 mile stretch at, well, like, Nahana? That used to be 45, is now 35. People are passing like crazy on there now, and at higher speeds than they used to be. No, so I don't think any community input. No, so I don't think any community input was taken by D O T or whoever is authorizing these. And were we asked if we even wanted them or thought we needed them? No, and one of the guys that was helping to put in one of the things, he told us it costs thirty thousand dollars put in one hump. And who's paying for that? Is that federal money? Is that state money, city money, county money? Who's really paying for all these things? And, yeah, was it, were any studies done? They said, yeah, who requested the humps?
Thank you, Jenny. Thank you, thank you, Mel. You've heard all these questions. Do you have any answers? Or I'm sure you didn't.
Yes, I don't.
Yes. One more question?
Question, but it's a statement.
A statement?
At the medical center.
That's true.
There's a difference, people haven't understood. Yes, they have a twenty-four hour emergency room, but since it's a medical center, they're limited of what they can do. Most of the times, nearest hospital is thirty miles away. You have Castle, Queens Honolulu, Queens West. And that's the only real hospital, if you're kind of concussion, only two hospitals, that's trauma centers. Queens and now Castle, which is good, but they're still thirty miles plus. And even rural areas, that is a far drive for humans to come to you and take you to hospital.
Is there a point that ambulances now have to go over all of these humps?
Yes.
As John said it, with the fire department, which also immense, it takes so many seconds for each hump they have to go over.
So we're concerned now about all these ambulances taking longer and longer and longer to get to a hospital thirty miles away.
Mel, when do you, we've given you so much here, so far, but when you come back, be with us again?
I'll try to come back in next meeting.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh. We have committees that, do we have any reports? Are any announcements? If there are no committee reports, then exactly what can be important? The Committee for Community Residents and Emergency Communities. We just got news from Senator Schatz, Representative Takuta and Senator Barone, that they've awarded Uyo Ha'ula or the Ko'ala'ala Community Residents, five point four million. And that's for twenty twenty-four. So congratulations, everybody, for this great group.
Think how many speed bumps.
Thank you to our representatives and senators looking after us like no one else has. Thank you. And any other reports or announcements? From the board? Anyone, Jenny?
I'm sorry, this actually goes to the D O T. I live on Inul Place and Ken Highway. That bridge there, my son and my nephew were walking, crossed it a couple of weeks ago. And a truck came across the bridge, they were walking on the side. They said the whole thing shook. They thought an earthquake was happening. So there's really a big problem with that bridge. And they came out here several years ago talking about replacing that bridge.
Is this the bridge that they're working on, Jenny?
No, it's a bridge. I don't know the name of the bridge, it's on Inul Place and Ken Highway. Wa'aka'ama Street.
Wa'aka'ama. That's the next bridge they're supposed to work on. And so Mel, are you still there?
Okay, I would like to find out the status for that project.
Okay, that, I think they told us that that project would be next. And I also wanted to mention that we, there was a question about the bridge project currently in Ha'ula. And it was supposed to be the one at it's Kapakau and they wrote, they wrote Wa'aka'ama is a great word, something about bridge. And they're working on that right now. They've been working on it a couple of years, I think. And we'd like to know when that's supposed to be completed. And then the request that Jenny was just mentioning is the one that's at Wa'aka'ama. Okay. Thank you very much, Mel. You had a big night.
Thank you, noted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We, any other announcements? And we need to approve the minutes in the last meeting so that meeting was was there announcement down there?
Oh, sorry. I have an announcement for the Health and Human Services Committee. I just want to make an announcement. There is a free eight month Ha'ula based intervention program for native Hawaiians and Pacific Islanders where between the ages of fifty to seventy-five, as we know, native Hawaiians and Pacific Islanders are at risk for health disparities that include high blood pressure, high cholesterol, diabetes, and high B M I. So if any kupuna are interested, you can go ahead and give us a call. My name is Atalina and my phone number is eight oh eight seven eight two five eight three five. We can come to you and help you fill out the application for the program. I also want to announce Human Services, we have the Patch Open Doors Scholarship for preschool for Keke age three to four. So the Patch Open Door Scholarship helps to pay for tuition for childcare or preschool. The two accredited preschools that we have in Ko'ala'au are Rainbow School and Bright Beginnings. So if you're interested in signing up for the patch program, we'll be at Bright Beginnings March twenty-sixth from five P M to eight P M, helping families to apply for that assistance program. It provides, I think, nine hundred to twelve hundred dollars per month for the entire year of twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six school year, starting this fall. Part of that program as well, but this one is year round. So the patch program, the deadline is March twenty-eighth. There's also the childcare subsidy. So childcare subsidy is for children who are thirteen and younger where families where both parents work, or if it's a single, single parent family, if that single parent works, the child can get funding for a family member or for someone to take care of them while their parent is working. And for children who are older, that would be from after school till whenever the parent comes off of work. So if you're interested, you can also come to Bright Beginnings on March twenty-sixth from five P M to eight P M. And we would be happy to help you. Again, Atalina, my number is eight oh eight seven eight two five eight three five. Mahalo.
She was going to kill her. Me? I want to make an announcement that on March twenty-sixth at twelve noon, we will be having a luncheon for kapuna from Kahuku to Ka'ava in the entire Ko'ala'au area. Our speaker is Officer Dempsey Onga, and he is going to be speaking us on how to avoid being scammed. So it's really interesting, it's fun, and it's an outing and free lunch.
Say the date again, Ella. Ella, can you say the date again?
What?
The date.
March twenty-sixth. Tuesday, March twenty-sixth.
Tuesday, March twenty-sixth. Twelve noon.
Here. Kapuna.
Ha'ula Community Center. Multi-person. Okay. Any other announcements? Okay, we're now going to go back and approve the minutes from January eleventh and February eighth. I'm sorry, I skipped that. So.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion is made second?
Second.
Okay, second. So no objections? They've been approved. Okay, thank you very much. And good night, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for sticking with us tonight. Good night, everybody. Evening, thank you. Yes.
Thursday, April ninth, ninth, fourth, next meeting. I'm working on it.
Thank you, good night.